Good morning and welcome to our virtual business meeting on May 14, 2020. And as you know, we're holding our meetings virtually. If you joined us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have an opportunity to provide your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it at that time during the meeting by emailing clacko news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you're, where you're emailing from, I guess. And Gary, please take the role.
Yes, so our staff support today is Stephen Madcor, County Council, and Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board. Role call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
There you go. Commissioner Fisher.
Here. But hey, you guys, I was just interrupted by a voice telling me that they could understand me better if I wanted to go through a process. So no, with these new upgrades, we might have some technical issues.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
All right.
All right. Well, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Gary, I think we have a special guest.
Yes, we do. We have our county clerk, Sherri Hall, who will give a brief elections update because, as you all know, next Tuesday is election day here in Oregon. So Sherri, please go ahead.
Your mics, you gotta, your mic.
Okay, can you hear me? Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to give you an update. Our whole process is just going very well and I want to report the positives. As of today, we have 68,399 ballots back out of 296, 678, yeah, 978, sorry, 296, 978. And we're comparing our returns with 2016, which was the last presidential election. And our percentages are higher, but so are the numbers of voters. We are at 23% today. The same day in 16 was 21.5%. But in 16, we only had 241,755 registered voters. And at this time, we have 296,978. And that's about 60,000 more, give or take. Today is, excuse me, yesterday was the last day to mail a ballot back to safely know that it will be counted because of the mail. From now on, it should be dropped in drop boxes. There are 25 of them around the county. And the box is an opportunity to just drop the ballot in. There's no touch points as far as opening a door to get it in. And all of the boxes are outside. And so it's 24/7. Clackamas County is in very good shape with drop boxes. Thanks to the commissioners who approved those a couple of years ago. We're the only ones that have 24/7 drop boxes. Other counties have them in libraries and some of the buildings that are closed. So our voters have the best opportunity to get it in on time. I also want to give a shout out to the county in general, but especially County Council, who have redeployed some of their employees to work in elections. And it's going very well. We only have about half as many as usual because of the space requirements. But everything we've needed, administration has made sure is provided. And just this morning, I was talking to one of our regular temps who said how nice it is to have some regular county employees because, you know, as they're working, they're talking and they're getting different levels of conversation and they just really appreciate it. Our office will be open to the public on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for anyone that needs help with or a replacement ballot. Because it's too late for us to mail things to the voter, just since it's too late for the voter to mail things back, mail ballots back. All of our vote by mail procedures are working really well during this time of the pandemic. So we've kind of been prepared ahead of time. And you have to know that, you know, it's, Oregon has been doing this for 20 some years, 20 plus a few months. And we've built the system over this time. So there's some states that are just switching overnight to vote by mail. And I hope it works well for them. We're, we're in good shape. Is there any questions that any of you have?
Any questions? I don't see any.
I have a question and I'm sorry, couldn't quickly raise my hand fast enough. So yes, if it's possible, if you could get, change your vote, if you voted and then you realized you wanted to vote differently, is it possible to get a new ballot?
No. Once, once your ballot has been returned to our office, it gets scanned in. We started opening ballots on Tuesday. Once it leaves your hands and gets placed for elections, you cannot change it. You would have to hang on to it at home and you could reopen it and do whatever you want. And it will, it will work, but not once it's been turned in here. We started opening on Tuesday. All of the ballots that come in daily will, you know, be scanned, signature verified, and they're now going to the tables to open. And we're hoping we have the majority in by Monday because that's the, that's the ballots that will be in the first return on Tuesday night at 8 o'clock. And maybe I should remind you that we're not working through the night with this election. Many of our workers are between 65 and 85. And the pandemic, of course, they're the more susceptible. And I did tell you that a couple of months ago and you seemed to approve. So our first returns will be 8 o'clock election night and the next return will be on noon on, on Wednesday. And like I said, hopefully most of the ballots will be in and there won't be that many more to do and we'll finish up within a few days.
Hopefully you don't ruin my night's sleep.
Well, that would be you that allows your night's sleep to be ruined if you're stressed. You have to figure out a way to handle that.
I guess I do.
And hopefully, you know, we always want the, the numbers different with races to be big. So they're whoever wins, wins big. And it's not hanging on Jim by maybe five points and you're up all night, right?
I've had one of those.
You've had one of those?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Yes. Let's see, three of you sitting here are on the ballot, right?
Let me see. Yes.
Yep. The campaigning will end by Tuesday, right?
Yes. Tuesday at 8.
Right.
Paul, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Sherri, just for the readers out there or the listeners and watchers, you mentioned that the ballots have been opened. And I just, can you just clarify for folks? I know the process and I know that, how it's done. I know that you, they're open and then when they're separated from the envelope, at that point, no one knows, after signature verification, no one knows what, whose ballot that is. They're loaded into a machine and locked. Could you just expand on that so people don't think that we've opened them so we already know what the outcome is?
We never know who votes how. The ballots come in, they get run through our scanning machine, which scans the barcode, which contains a lot of information. And then that is given a file name and it's uploaded into our statewide voter file and fills in the boxes, you know, to know if we accepted your ballot, you know, the dates, the precincts. It has a lot of information to go with that voter identification so that we can keep those stats. Then we've been scan, we've been scanning and signature verifying from the Monday after the ballots were mailed out, which is three weeks ahead. And then they go into, you know, area where they're saved until we can start opening, which the law says is seven days before election day. So that was on Tuesday of this week. And then those ballots are run through a machine to basically open them. You know, they, it sort of powders off the edge. It doesn't cut anything. Then the ballots in batches are placed on the tables for the processing teams to open. And they take this scan, let's see, the secrecy sleeve, which has the ballot in it. They remove that from the signature envelope. And the envelopes are always supposed to be placed face down, which means the signature doesn't show. It's just the top. And then once all of them have been removed, that stack of signature envelopes is removed from the table. And then they take the ballot out of the secrecy sleeve. And, you know, it's folded, so they have to smooth out the folds and prepare it for tally. So it can go through our tally machines and the machines can read the way the voter voted. And we're keeping up that process every day. We, like I said, we have about 40 as all in that room right now because space requirements. We would normally have, normally have 80 to 85. So this process is going to be slower, but it's still working exactly as we always do it. And the, the scanning is going on too, the scanning through the tally machines. But there's no total button pushed until about 15 minutes before 8 o'clock so that we can get the results on the webpage at 8 or 8:05.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands. Thank you, Sherri, for coming in today. Appreciate your update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
All right. Next is COVID-19 updates. We'll start with Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander at our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead and ask.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So our numbers for the day is Oregon has 3,416 positives, 134 deaths, excuse me, 80,571 negatives. Clackamas County has 274 positives, and that is not an increase. Nine deaths, 7,697 negatives. Multnomah County has 921 positives, 53 deaths, 17,701 negatives. Washington County has 614 positives, 14 deaths, 11,450 negatives. And right now statewide, we only have 53 that are hospitalized. So that is really good news. So, and I think, I'm not sure if everyone saw the news article that just came out mid-morning, about 9:30, I think, about the years, the counties that have been approved to open. There's more counties than I really did expect. But I will say, when I took a look at it, there's no one in Health Region 1 that was approved. So all of the counties that did in Health Region 1 who applied did not get approved for Phase 1 at this time. So I think that's worth noting at this point. So some things we have going on here in the EOC. On 5/14, we're going to have a, food boxes are going to be distributed at Malala at the senior center. Also at Sandy, at the Sandy Cinema parking lot. And I want to thank both of those cities for working with us on that and making sure that that goes smoothly. On 5/15, we are going to work with the Salvation Army at the Clackamas Town Center. And I want to thank Dennis Curtis there, who manages the Clackamas Town Center and helping us with that and making sure that goes smoothly, as well as our own traffic control people here at the county who've been working in the EOC as well. We continue, are, are working with the CBOs, the community-based organizations around food and non-food donations. We have a lot of needs in the, for the vulnerable and the underserved populations. So we're working with those groups. We don't have the capacity here to have a donation station. So we're working with the groups to have people take them to those particular organizations so they can directly start working with the populations as well. And it kind of takes that middleman out. We're anticipating PPE needs to meet the reopening requirements. We are working here in the tri-county. And we're exploring if we should be doing a large order for certain items, like Tyvek suits, to make sure that we have them here in the tri-county. And we, hopefully over the next couple of days, we'll have that all figured out and how we're going to do that and what we are going to be ordering. And my last item today, I did want to say that we have a Who's Open tool, which is now live on our website. And this is a great tool. We looked at it yesterday. We worked with our colleagues, of course, with BCS, Business Community Services. And so businesses can go in and they can say if they're open and it maps you, maps that for you. And you have that up on your screen now. So this is a web-based mapping tool. And if you go to www.clackamas.us and if you actually just put in the search bar, Who's Open, it will bring you to this page that you're looking at now. Or it'll link you to this page so you, and you can click on that link, go to this page. And anyone can see who's open here in the county as long as they have put their information into this application. And I just want to thank all the staff for pulling that together. It's a great tool, I think, for our residents as well as our businesses. And that is all I have today.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions? Well, I'd just like to then make a comment. You know, we're working on a application, which I believe we'll have an opportunity to look at and review on Friday for consideration on Tuesday. So be sure and watch your email and look at that. And I assume you guys all got the notes from last night's discussion. My question, if the governor were sitting across from me right now, is if we put in an application and the others don't, do we open or not? I guess we're going to find that out. But I also want to make sure that people out there understand the danger that exists if we do this wrong. And so we need to be careful, follow the rules, wear masks whenever we're around folks. Otherwise, the danger of having to close again, it would be devastating. So we're trying to avoid that. And so our goal right now is to put that application in on the 22nd. It may be true with Washington County or Multnomah County. I don't know that. They're talking about it Tuesday. And we're talking about it Tuesday. So I look forward to that discussion and the outline before the weekend. So we're all prepared to have a good brisk discussion on Tuesday. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
And I assume that Dr. President's going to be on call on Tuesday?
So on Tuesday, for sure, Philip Mason-Joyner and myself are going to do the presentation. And I do have an email in to Dr. President to see if she can be here. And I also want to clarify that, yes, we're working on the draft. It will, we'll get it to tomorrow. I can't guarantee it'll be first thing in the morning because we're looking at it today, but you will get it by the end of the day.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out that, you know, as you hear obviously, heard this morning that Nancy said that the governor's probably going to open some of the counties. And then in Region 1, that's not the case. But in looking at other states to the south and to the north, Washington State has opened up some counties in different phases. And California, I thought, was pretty interesting. Been watching that. Another, a number of the counties in Northern California have opened and never even had a case, actually. So they've had a real favorable, a very favorable situation. But interestingly, it's kind of been out there that Los Angeles County, which has probably got one of the, one of the higher densities counties in the state, next to Alameda and San Francisco area. But Los Angeles County is predicted to be the last county to open in the state because it's, because of the intensity of the, the intensity and the propensity for the virus to even spread and worsen in that area. So, but neighboring counties are probably going to open much sooner. And we're kind of in a very similar situation here where we've, we, our neighbor, our neighboring counties to the north and south have some really high numbers. Our numbers are very low. So we need to maintain that. We need to, at the same token, not disadvantage our, the businesses in California or the businesses in Clackamas that are performing well.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other raised hands and we're moving on to Gary.
All right. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Nancy. First, Commissioners, for the record, I want to remind you all that I signed a contract on your behalf under the COVID-19 emergency declaration. I signed this contract on May 8, 2020. And then you reviewed and ratified it on May 12, 2020, earlier this week. But for the record, it was a contract for Health Housing and Human Services, Amendment Number 1 to a contract with Do Good Multnomah for COVID-19 Positive Shelter in the amount of $450,000. This funding is coming from a federal emergency services grant. And the purpose of the grant is for motel vouchers for those in need related to COVID-19. So again, you already ratified this earlier this week. But just for the minutes, I want to remind all that you did approve that on a contract I signed on your behalf. Second, Dylan, if you could help, please. We want to recognize businesses and nonprofits here in Clackamas County who are continuing to offer their services and support for those in our area that are in need of support due to COVID-19. So in particular, we'd like to thank our Clackamas 911 Center or CCOM. They received 60 face shields from a high school robotics club in Camas, Washington. Team Mean Machine is a group of teenagers who had their robotics season cut short and they provided shields to several area 911 centers. 911 staff can wear these over headsets, which make, which made traditional face coverings hard to wear. So thank you to the high school in Camas for that excellent contribution and donation to 911 centers across the area, but especially our CCOM center here at Clackamas County. So thank you for that. And then, as always, of course, I want to thank our staff for all that they're doing, all staff, all of our leadership, and in particular, those working in our Emergency Operations Center. So these are county employees who are, are really leaving, moving from their regular jobs and in many cases, still doing their regular jobs and supporting our Emergency Operations Center. They're really a 24/7 operation. While they may be physically on-site during, you know, quote, "normal working hours", they are working into the evening all weekend long, multiple staff. And I just want to thank them and recognize them for all that they are doing to support our community all day, every day. So thank you. And of course, Nancy is the Incident Commander and Philip Mason-Joyner, the co-commander. You both have been working non-stop and really been incredibly dedicated professionals. So thank you to you individually and all those in our EOC. That is my update. Unless there are any other questions on COVID, we'll move on. Not seeing any. All right. So we'll move on to discussion item. So as you know, Commissioners, during this emergency, things change on a very rapid basis. So what was noticed was a discussion on approval of a local grant agreement between Clackamas County and Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon to provide technical assistance to businesses and a small grant microloan program on behalf of Clackamas County in an effort to support the local businesses, business community impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. Since we noticed this, though, the state of Oregon, through Business Oregon, is offering a grant program and staff is seeking your permission to change course. So I'm going to let Laura Zentner, Director of Business and Community Services, and Sarah Ekman, Deputy Director of Business and Community Services, they will quickly explain the pivot we would like to take and why we need your permission fairly quickly today due to meet this grant deadline. So Laura and Sarah, if you would please explain the change and what we're proposing.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt. As mentioned, my name is Laura Zentner, Director of Business and Community Services. And with me is Sarah Ekman, Deputy Director of Business and Community Services. So as you're aware, we had planned to present and discuss our proposed COVID-19 Business Small Grants and Loans Program today. I previously talked about this at Issues and we were really looking forward to finalizing that agreement today. As mentioned, this business item has been removed. So I would like to explain why and provide some additional background information. But let me tell you, this is good news. The new development with the state of Oregon caused us to pause and recommend that we adjust course and delay moving forward with the MISO grant agreement today until we can fully review this new opportunity. So on Friday, May 8, Business Oregon released a notice of funding opportunity for an emergency business assistance matching fund program that if we apply for and receive, would match our proposed $200,000 for small grants and loans, dollar for dollar. Our $200,000 could be doubled, making $400,000 in grants available to our local business community. In order for us to be eligible for the Business Oregon program, we would need to revise our criteria so that it matches the Business Oregon requirements. Their requirements are very similar to ours in spirit, but do have some distinct differences that we need to more closely align to. The application to Business Oregon is due Monday, May 18. So we need to move quickly in order to consider applying for those matching funds. The goal of the Business Oregon program is to fill gaps not reached by other programs. And the state funds are directed to adversely affected businesses with 25 or fewer employees. And if you remember, our program, we had 10 or fewer, so we would have to adjust that. To sole proprietors, only those that have been unable to receive Federal Care Act funding, including the Small Business Administration Payroll Protection Program and the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Emergency Advance Program. And additionally, Business Oregon program values are to ensure that historically disbanded, disadvantaged individuals that own businesses have access to these funds, which matches very closely with ours. They want to ensure that these funds are reaching every corner of Oregon and that they want to ensure these funds are keeping, obviously, businesses operational. So based on this opportunity, I would respectfully request that we delay consideration and approval of the agreement with MISO until next week, May 21, which would allow us time to revise the criteria so that they're consistent with the terms of the state of Oregon COVID-19 Emergency Business Assistance Matching Fund Program. And then the second item I need to ask for is approval for BCS to apply for the state of Oregon COVID-19 Emergency Business Assistance Matching Fund so that we can potentially increase the amount of the grant dollars that we have available. So with that, I can answer any questions. And Sarah also, her and her team have done an amazing amount of work on this, so she's here to answer questions.
So while I can ask a question, but I wanted to ask one first. If some, some people have applied and have not got notice that they're going to receive it or not, I know one person who's doing that. Will there be some provision in here that if they get it, they have to give the money back so that we can redistribute it? Is there anything like that? Or could we put that in there?
I mean, I would think we could put that in the criteria. Because again, if they receive the payroll protection dollars or any of the other CARE Act dollars, we can't disperse our funds to them. So we will have to have some mechanism to do that. We will work with legal and finance their grant area to make sure that we consider all of those things.
Okay. Thank you. Ken?
Yes, we clearly heard from the business community how they feel about trying to get open and, and the impact of COVID-19 on, on their businesses and, and on the community overall. The opportunity to double our impact and help those businesses. I think it would be irresponsible of us to not take advantage of this. So I would move to approve your recommendations, both of them, in total.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Martha first and then Paul. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? So the motion was to put in the application. And what was the second? That's the, it's really one motion, right? Laura?
You need me to read it or?
Yeah, let's read the motion. I don't have it in front.
So, request approval for BCS to apply to the state of Oregon COVID-19 Emergency Business Assistance Matching Fund Program so that we can potentially increase the amount of the grant dollars available to our historically disadvantaged, disadvantaged local business community impacted. community impacted by, by COVID-19.
Any further discussion? Okay, please poll us. Is Christina polling us? Okay.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis? Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Laura. It's a good night.
Is there anything you want to say, Sarah?
No, you all covered it. Thank you.
Great. So to clarify, you've given permission for staff to apply for the Business Oregon Grant, and we're going to pause on the Micro Enterprise Services Program for now and make the Business Oregon Grant the priority. So that is the direction you've given us, and thus, we'll go forward. So thank you, Laura and Sarah, for the quick turnaround on this. Thank you, Commissioners, for being flexible. With that, next is consent agenda. I'll ask Christina, the clerk, to read that, please.
Share my screen. Okay, so number one is approval for Agreement 9739 to Personal Services Agreement with CARE Oregon for COVID-19 Funding. Approval for Agreement 9649 to a Participating Provider Agreement with Pacific Source Community Solutions for Healthcare Services to members enrolled with Oregon Health Plan. Approval for Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County Fire District Number One for Medical Direction. Approval for Personal Services Contract with Catholic Community Services of Western Washington for Crisis and Acute Transition Services. Authorization to Purchase Quantity 15 Wave Tronics Advanced 200-E Extend Range Sensor Systems for the Department of Transportation and Development. Approval of Goods and Services Contract with Potter Industries LLC to provide Type II Glass Traffic Beads for Clackamas County. And Acceptance of a Grant Award from the State of Oregon for the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA 4499-DR-OR COVID-19 Grant Funding.
Thank you. I'll ask if any of the Commissioners just remove an item from the consent agenda? And up, there's a, Sonia?
I don't want to remove an item, but I have a process question. Gary, I'm just curious, I know on Tuesday, we gave a thumbs up on the Contract Amendment to Do Good, and I'm just guessing that will be on our consent agenda next week to approve officially, or how does that work when we do a contract amendment?
Right, so you, you formally approved that on Tuesday at your work sessions, and when I read it into the record today, that means in the business meeting minutes of this meeting, we'll go to the staff report and acknowledgement that you already verbally approved it on Tuesday. So that will be in the minutes of today's meeting.
Great, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's removed, and second, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll the Commission.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Gary, what's up next?
Yes, next is Citizen Communication, and we have Dylan Blaylock from Public and Government Affairs will moderate this portion of the meeting. Go ahead, Dylan.
Thank you, County Administrator Schmidt. Now is the time for public comment on any topic related to county business. If any attendees would like to provide a general comment or pose a question related to any aspect of county business, now is the time. I see we have several attendees. You can go ahead and use the raise hand feature on Zoom. That's on the Zoom bar at the top or bottom, depending on your device. And if you are on the phone, I see we do have some phone listeners as well, you can hit star nine, and that lets me know that you have a question to poser, I'm sorry, a comment to relay. I'll give people a few seconds to do that. I'm waiting for people to do that. I'll remind our audience that anyone is welcome to review our strategic plan, Performance Clackamas, at any time at clackamas.us/performance, and that features the five strategic priorities of the county, such as build a strong infrastructure, just to name one. And I do have a couple or three emails that have come in from residents as well. But first, we will go to those who are on Zoom. Marvin Watkins is the handle that I have. Marvin, you're going to need to go ahead and unmute yourself, and they're very good. And once you do, you can go ahead and please give your name, your area of residence, and keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
This is Marvin Watkins. I'm in Gladstone, Oregon, and my wife has some comments and questions.
Yes, I heard on the news, I believe it was Tuesday night, Channel 6, that Clackamas County has not even applied to open up, that Maloma County has not, and neither has Washington either, and I want to know why.
Well, I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you for the question. Because of the size of our population, we have a certain requirement to have a large quantity of contract tracers hired or on contract to trace when we open up, the impact of opening up. We have been working on that for quite some time. Once we, we need to bring in 30 people, and those 30 people need to be trained. And right now, we're working, we need as many as 70, and we're going to have the others on contract. The other thing is, we're part of a health region, and that means that our region hospitals have to have enough PPEs should a surge occur. Last week or the week before, we had 25% of our hospitals that did not have adequate supplies. Depending upon the area, 30 days of supplies should there be a uptick in COVID-19 hospitals' days. So we have pretty much reached fulfilling the need of PPEs, and we are planning on reviewing our application Friday, and, and discuss it on Tuesday, and put an application in next Friday, the 22nd. Now, we don't know if the governor will accept it, because we are part of a health region, and she already turned down two of those applicants, and those were the ones in, along the coast, I believe. So we certainly have been working at this for weeks, but it's also a very moving target. The governor did, I got to tell you one thing first. Both Multnomah, Washington, and Portland got literally hundreds of millions of dollars to do this. Clackamas County, because of our population, got nothing from the federal government. So we needed assurance from the governor that she'll pay for this, and we got that last Friday. So we, again, have been working on this. I, I don't know if anyone else would like to add to that? I don't see anyone.
No, Miss Coach Humbertson has his hand up.
Oh, okay.
Just so the people understand that because we are in a health region, and there are three other counties besides our, our two neighbors and ourselves, we have to be prepared to deal with a surge in all six counties, and those other three counties, at least one or two of them have no hospitals of their own, which means we will have to service their population if we have a surge. So it complicates things to be a part of a larger region, but it, we are the most populous region in the entire state, and that's why it's going to take a little bit longer.
And I see Paul, and then Martha?
Yeah, I just want to add to the, just convey to the caller that if you want to have some more detailed understanding of that, I think our Tuesday work session, we went over that in great detail. So if you are able to go to our website and click on that policy session, you'll be able to hear some more details about how we arrived where we did. And, you know, I, I think we're all anxious, but we also want to make sure we do it as safely as possible. And at the end of the day, it's the governor who makes the call, the governor's office who makes the call.
Martha?
Yeah, Jim, didn't we have a conversation with the governor's office? I just wanted to clarify this for the public as well as myself, actually. Don't we really have, there's a little over $700 million left, and they're going to disperse a certain amount of that out of those dollars to us locally? And we came up with what we would, what we would need because of a population estimate? Can you, can you address that?
Sure, I, I said to the governor, and thanks to Paul's math, $72 million would be our share. When I asked her that, she said, that was the federal government that set that distribution rate, not me. So that has not been determined yet how much money we're going to get. I get the impression it's invoice. We're going to have to invoice her for, invoice Oregon for training and for staff support. So we'll be tracking that. But she did, she pushed back pretty hard when I asked her for $72 million.
Kind of thinking, the other, the other piece of this is that we're, we're 25,000 shy of, of meeting that 500,000 threshold, are we not?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand. Okay, thank you. Okay.
So unless we have a lot of babies, really quick now, we're not going to be making that. All right, I don't see any other hands. Let's go on to the next question.
Thank you very much, Deborah, for that question. Next, I'm going to bring over, the, the handle is Bill O. Bill O, if you are there, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, thank you very much. Please give your name, your area or city of residence, and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill Osborne here, I'm from Gladstone, also a candidate for Clackamas County Commissioner. Obviously, you guys are in a tough situation now, and I, I respect that. What I'm here today to talk about is the parks and reopening parks. A lot of them have closed, a lot of boat ramps have, and a lot of times, this is cited from the governor's order. Now, the governor's order, especially, I believe this line 22, talks about parks and recreation areas, and simply says that they need to be big enough where social distancing can be adhered to. Restrooms must have a garbage can, soap and water, or hand sanitizer. In Gladstone, where I live, we'd closed two of our biggest parks that have joined together, Meldrum Bar and Doll Park, and fortunately, yesterday, we opened those back up. We, we see a lot of people that use these areas with boat ramps specifically, and in that, they're out doing something that is deemed essential. They're trying to procure, procure food for themselves or their families. It's also a recreational activity, and in these high-stress times, any recreation activity we can do, maintaining a social distance from others and keeping safe, is important. One of the big issues, I think we're going to look back on this, is the suicide rate as well. A lot of people suffer from depression and anxiety in times like this. Those of us that don't sometimes suffer from it. So having our parks open are beneficial, and I believe very important for that. We also have a homeless population, which I know we've talked about. There's a measure on this ballot here, and we have a lot of homeless people that access bathrooms there, and that's their only restroom. They don't have a home to go in. I'd like to point out that the city of Portland Parks stayed open. There, they had 54 bathrooms that were accessible 24 hours a day. Certainly, Clackamas County can do things better than Portland. I have faith in the people here. I would never want to live in Portland. Rarely do I ever compare us to Portland, saying they've done a good thing, and this is probably the only exception in my whole life, and maybe will be. So I, I would ask that you consider reopening the parks. Closing the boat ramps also to promote social distancing has had the opposite effect. While Meldrum Bar was closed, if any of you have seen the Oregon City Sports Craft Landing, one of the few open boat ramps, it was full. Cars were parked up the street, across the street in the shopping center, and down on the road behind the shopping center. So the more boat ramps we get, the more parks we open up, the more people can disperse in these and keep their distance. So again, I would hope you would consider taking this action, and I realize you're in a tough, tough situation. I, I don't mean to criticize you in a time like this. I'm just really pointing out something that I think would be beneficial. So thank you for your time.
Bill, I understand Milwaukee's boat ramp has never closed, and isn't there also one on Oak Grove Boulevard, Paul? I don't think that ever closed, did it?
That was, yeah, that, I think there were, there's limited parking in there, so it's not as viable of a spot as possible, and I think that I recognize the caller's concern. I think we've expressed that a couple of times in our, in our meetings. I will add that I think our, because of like Barton Parks closed and other parks that we have control over are closed, it forces people to go to a very limited number of parks. I believe the mayor of Milwaukee made it very clear the other day that while the ramp is open, the dock is closed, because I think probably for the social distancing aspect of it, not being able to achieve that. So, yeah, I, I think the more, if, if, if a number of the ramps are open across the county, it will relieve the pressure on the very few that are in Clackamas County that are open.
So the, the boat ramps open, and the dock is removed during the winter, and that's why it's not open. And once the river, I, you know, later on, the county actually puts the docks back in space, in place, so they were only removed as they always are during the winter, because they get log jams behind them. But, yeah, and then, of course, we don't have any control over Gladstone. And the other thing we had were bathrooms that were being vandalized, and so we had to shut that down and get alternative restrooms for a while. But my understanding, I think, is that they're back open, but I'm not positive. They are, yes. All right, Martha, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to add to what you just said, Chair, and that is that we did provide alternative restrooms, and we also, if I recall from our Emergency Operations Center, are providing showers in places for people that won't have access to these kinds of things otherwise, so.
Thank you, Martha. All right, next question.
All right, thank you very much for that comment. Bill, next, I'm going to bring over Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay. My apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, as far as Grazer, it could be something else. Elizabeth, if you want to go ahead, oh, you had yourself unmuted a second ago. There you go. Please give your name, your area, and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Grazer Lindsay, and I live in Beaver Creek. I was grateful to learn from your staff that you have committed to zeroing out the county's electricity carbon footprint. That's really great news. Your staff did a superb job of keeping the cost extraordinarily low, and I shared links to that meeting with the Clackamas Climate Action Coalition's leadership team, who found it encouraging. I'm also grateful that the staff are re-engaging with working towards the county's climate action plan, for which the RFP is ready. During a health emergency, it is heartening to know that you aren't distracted from the climate emergency. I've heard that the RFP is going out in May, and I was wondering what your understanding is about that.
Well, no, we're going to have to go to Gary and see if he knows.
Yes, the, it's, it's awaiting approval in our procurement office, and I will say it's, it's temporarily on hold just because of all the COVID work our staff is doing, but it is anticipated we'll have it out on the street by the end of this month, so in the next two weeks, yes.
Thank you. That sounds great.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth, for the call. Next?
It looks like Commissioner Humbertson had a hand raise.
Yes, I have, I, I just haven't had a chance to get back to Elizabeth on this, but I got a, a text from Kimberly, my assistant. So this is what I have most recently on, on her question. There are a couple of things with respect to climate action planning that have been delayed. The RFP was one of them. It got reprioritized due to COVID. It is not on hold. It's just that procurement's bandwidth dropped. It remains in the department queue and has yet to go out. We expect it to go out realistically in the not-too-distant future, but it's going to be two to two and a half months before we actually have a contract, because we have to go through the interview process. But it is moving forward and has not been dropped.
All right, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just clarify, I think there's two different things. Yeah, I just want to just clarify. I think there's two different things that the caller had, had brought up and just want to verify that our opportunity. To purchase some of those. Alternative power. Opportunities that they are, we're not, we're not being delayed or losing out on a market opportunity. Because I do know that there's a very narrow window to capture and be one of the participants in those, in those opportunities. So. Is that part delayed or which is it? Or maybe can we have an update maybe on Tuesday from Evan Polk?
I'll have to give you an update on Tuesday. I don't have that information right now.
I just, I just don't want to lose out on any opportunities that could pass us by to make, to make some of those. Purchases, if you want to call them that, on, because primarily because they're, some of them are awfully attractive financially to the county. And so if we're not ready to go, then basically, I think, as I understood it, less. Financially attractive. Opportunities will be out there and I think we ought to just be seizing the ones that are the most beneficial. And I do want to make sure we're prepared for that.
So our Director of Transportation just texted me and said, nothing is delayed. Nothing is delayed. However, we'll give you an update on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for listening, watching our show. What's anybody else?
Yes, Commissioner, I do have three emails to go through, but we do have one additional hand that has gone up. I believe it is from Deborah again. So I'm going to ask Deborah to unmute and give your comment, please.
Oh, well, it's, my understanding that Governor Brown is being sued by Baker Tommy because she does three thirty-day. Emergency nights started on, I believe, March eighth and ended on April eighth. And I'm, I, I don't understand why you feel obligated to follow the governor's rules. One of the craft, it only had nine deaths in populous county. And I'm seventy-one years old. I want to live my life. I want to go to church. I want to get a haircut. I want to get a pedicure. I want to live. And I'm, I'm, I'm tired of this democracy. I want to know when you plan to open up Clackamas County.
So we're under governor's orders. We have to turn in the application. They, she did open up retail. And once our application in, is in, I believe, we will, the governor, I heard her do it in other ones. Will open up salons and things like that with appropriate spacing. We, we cannot just jump over the governor's orders. You may have read in the paper where one city did and they got a letter from the Attorney General. So we're being careful and following the rules. We don't want to lose any lives. We don't want to overburn our hospitals. But we are certainly working hard to get this done as fast as we can, as safely as we can. And like I said, we'll have this discussion on Tuesday and hopefully on the twenty-second, we'll have our application in. And hopefully the governor reviews it quickly.
All right. I think I see a hand up from Commissioner Schrader, Chair.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd also like to comment that what the governor did was pull together. Groups from all of those sectors, retail, folks that do nails, all of those various manufacturing. And so what they did individually was pull together people who are in the field in those sectors. Who came up with protocols of how to safely open. So that took some time too. Because yes, we'll be able to go back into things, but there will more than likely be social distancing guidelines. You'll probably see more sanitizers in various places to consistently use. And I know that we've only had nine deaths, but I truly believe, quite frankly, it's because we did, we did go into shutdown. It's been hard on everybody. I'm living with two barking dogs every day that I constantly am protecting all of you from as I mute everything. So I understand that and I know that's being a little facetious kind of mentioning that, but we are working to open. There are going to be different protocols. So even as we start living our lives again, it's going to be a new normal. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. We have several email that came in, Chair. Can I go to those now?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. I mean, as, as per usual, I will look over to see after each one if any commissioners are waving their hands or raising their hands. Okay, the first comes from Darren Gunter, who's outside Wilsonville. Dear Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give business meeting comments over email. I believe your budget meetings are coming up next month. I urge commissioners to please shift resources into doing whatever the county can to feed hungry people. The situation is getting worse out here, both in the county and nationally. We're on the verge of the worst economy since the depression and unemployment continues to rise. This will be like nothing we've ever seen. I know that you have a finite amount of resources from your general pool. But I took the survey that ranked county services earlier this year. While things like county parks and traffic safety programs are important, these are different times. While those programs serve a purpose, they aren't as important as feeding the less fortunate. You can already see it with the lines at some food banks and they're running out. This is coming. This will get worse. I urge you to consider shifting resources in the budget from existing programs to ones that feed people. Even simply outright buying food for distribution, if that is legal. This should be a top priority. Things are going to get bad. In Darren Gunter, outside of Wilsonville.
Well, I'd like to comment on that. There's a couple of things that you mentioned that are actually restricted dollars. For example, traffic safety, those actually come and are required to be spent on roads. However, we do have a grant program, which I'm hoping Gary and staff has recommended funding. And I think we should focus on the food, on feeding people with those dollars. And by the way, Paul, Martha, Sonia, we're all working at food banks. Whenever we have an opportunity, I'm every Monday along with Ken and Martha at the Sheriff's Training Center, loading boxes. And really, the problem doesn't appear to be the shortage of food. It's, it's the distribution chain. We, and, and we also have large families and we had about two-hundred-and-fifty cars show up. On one of our days and we only had enough boxes loaded for about half that. So instead of getting food for the whole family, we had to just give them each a box. But we're doing it all over the county. Gary, I think you mentioned a couple earlier, Sandy or somebody did. In Sandy and around, we'll be doing the one in the sheriff's office in Clackamas. You know, on Thursday and Ken and I and Martha and Lynn Peterson actually deliver to Oregon City, Lake Oscego, Sandy, Estacada. And Kami. So we're working hard. So I'm hoping we'll be talking about that grant program when we get there. Anybody else who'd like to comment? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one comes from Rachel Jansen, RN, Registered Nurse, from Happy Valley. And I believe, just in reading it, it's rhetorical questions in the beginning followed by the comment. Finding people to do the COVID-nineteen tracing is holding back the opening up of our community and state. Is contract tracing legal outside of the healthcare community? Will HIPAA laws be followed? Will citizens' Fourth Amendment rights be followed? Will tracers need a warrant to enter a home to talk to asymptomatic or symptomatic citizens with a COVID-nineteen diagnosis? Tracers are being offered twenty-five dollars an hour or fifty-two thousand dollars a year for this job. Our governor has requested six hundred tracers for Oregon. Is the return on investment worth hiring tracers outside the healthcare community? Please let medical offices all across the state and county do the tracing of COVID-nineteen patients. Number one, it is a regular part of their practice. They come to them. They trust them. Medical offices are part of every community. Number two, they are staffed by already licensed and professionally trained MDs, PAs, MPs, RNs, MAs, and lab personnel. They have professional PPE and safety standards for its use. They have established COVID-nineteen protocols for testing, interviews, and quarantine boundaries and callbacks. They know HIPAA rules and regulations. They understand the importance of protecting patient rights and information for confidential tracing of contacts and limits of the law. They have already been employed by hospitals, clinics, urgent care centers. It would save taxpayers thousands of dollars if contract, contact tracing was done through medical clinics. Please consider supporting our trained medical professionals. Healthcare providers have been furloughed or laid off and could be legally capable of handling this work without the cost. Respectfully, Rachel Jansen, RN.
I know that we're working with nursing students that require some clinic experience. And I believe we're working on a contract with nursing, with nursing, nursing students. And as far as that other stuff, wow, I don't know that I can answer that, but. I'm sure that might be something that Nancy or the governor or somebody has an answer to. I do not. I'm sure they have to follow HIPAA rules and know they won't be going to breaking into people's houses and they won't be. I think it's more of a phone call, stuff like that. Gary?
We, we, we do not, contact tracers does not mean that we can violate people's rights and liberties as granted under our constitution. So we can get a formal response from our EOC to this individual, but no, this does not mean we take away people's rights by contact tracing.
All right, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to add to that just a little bit is that, as my understanding, it was made very clear that the contract tracers would be doing their work over the phone. And people can volunteer that, but they're not going to be forced to divulge or say anything they don't want to say. So we're just hoping that people look at this as constructive as possible to make sure we identify who. They've been in contact with so we can protect the remainder of the community.
Ken?
Yes, there was an internet rumor going around that contract tracers would be able to go into people's homes. And it comes out of a bill that was put in the House of Representatives called HB, I think it was HB six-six-six-six.
Right.
But it did not include that kind of intrusiveness into people's homes. That was a misinterpretation by someone out there in the internet world and it is categorically not true.
Thank you. I actually remember seeing that on the news now that you say that. Dylan, any other emails?
Yes, one final one, Chair, from Les Poole of Gladstone. At this time, thirty-three of Oregon's thirty-six counties have submitted reopening plans. When considering Clackamas, our situation is less challenging than Multnomah, but more complex than counties in eastern Oregon. Our dynamics closely match Marion County and their plan was submitted several days ago. Although we are unable to open until the health officer approves, where are we in this process? Is a draft available and posted online? Please briefly explain how we are tied to Multnomah. Our urgency is growing every day. Will the fourth floor commission office be reopening on Monday, the eighteenth? It is a separate entity from the rest of the county. Many question whether a complete closure was required and whether it's acceptable that no one has been answering the phone. Forwarding the line to a new secure cell phone should have occurred and wouldn't have created illegal liability. The new WHO's open webpage is a very helpful addition. There is much confusion. We residents need more information and that includes deeper commentary by the commissioners during their closing comments. Thank you, Les Poole.
Well, let me answer a couple of those and then Gary, I think we'd like to answer some of those. I don't, I think that, first off, we are tied to six, six counties are tied together in a health region. That means Tillamook, while they have a hospital. And Clatsop also has a hospital. Columbia County does not. But in an emergency, all those count, those three counties come to Multnomah, Washington, or Clackamas County for healthcare. In a surge, they would be, have to come to us. So the idea that the governor had was to create a health region. We are part of that health region. So just so you know, no, the draft, I don't think, is on the web yet. We haven't got it yet. We're looking at, looking at it tomorrow. It should be posted probably by Monday, if I were to guess. Gary can answer that. And we'll be reviewing it Monday, Tuesday for consideration of putting in the application on the twenty-second. However, we don't know if. As, if the governor will separate us from the region and move it forward or not. She did turn down already two of the counties that applied who are within the region. We don't know why. So we will keep you informed as soon as we can. And Gary, you might want to answer some of those.
Yes, so as far as the draft application, it will be posted online for the public to view tomorrow, as soon as staff completes it. I don't have a specific time, but it will be online. It will be on the Board of County Commissioners page for where their work sessions are normally posted for Tuesday, May nineteenth. That will be where the section, the document will be posted some point tomorrow. As far as the county buildings, most of them remain closed to the public until June first. I recommended that to you earlier this week and you approved. I say most, there are some exceptions to that, such as the elections office, which will be open, limited hours to the public. And our employees are still having appointment-based meetings with some members of the public to conduct some necessary business. Of course, our public safety is still working and so forth. The Board of County Commissioners Office is in the Public Services Building. And that building is closed to the public until June first, as I just mentioned. We are answering the telephones. Christina is doing that multiple times a day. We are asking people to leave a voicemail and then she checks the voicemails and returns calls multiple times a day. So we are not in any way not being responsive to the public by phone or by email. So I will offer that response.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just, just for, for, just for clarification sake is that, as Commissioner Bernard stated, we, the governor. The state structure put us in these health regions and Clackamas County is part of Health Region One and that includes Tillamook County. Clatsop County, Columbia County, Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington County. And they, of the seven prerequisites, there are three thresholds that are considered regional. In that, of those six counties. So if, if we don't meet those regional thresholds. Then none of those six counties will be approved by the governor. We can apply. And the governor made that clear on Friday in our call with her, that we can apply. And, and if, if we meet those three thresholds on the regional level. Then, and we meet all the others, then we can actually, should be approved if we meet all that criteria. So in essence. Counties that are in Health Region One will be able to open incrementally. We rank fourth in the per capita numbers. And Tillamook, Clatsop is, has the best numbers. Columbia County has, and that's not a ranking of the application. That's just the per capita cases of how they're, how they're doing and, and so forth. So I just want to just say that. You know, if any time we are allowed to open and suddenly any of those health region thresholds are not, no longer met. And we, we fall out of compliance, the state can actually pull all six counties back. So that's something, it's, it's, it's complicated, but those are the rules. We're, we're abiding by the state law. We're abiding by the rules put in, put in place. And it's a combination of actually both those, state law and the rules. So. If that offers any clarity, and I've got some comments later, then I'm going to read something that'll kind of give a little bit of bearing on this topic, but that's all I have for now.
Additionally, I'd like to add that on our call with the governor, we got some clarification we desperately needed. We thought we had to hire a hundred and twenty people and they had to be on staff. The governor told us that. We didn't need that many people, that they would pay for it. And that, you know, if we had to hire a hundred and twenty people in, in this budget. Yeah, that would be just about impossible. The, the other thing is, is that that clarif- The, the other thing is, is that that clarification, uh, that we didn't have to have them all on staff. Is made a huge difference. Yeah, night and day. Uh, we were still struggling however to get, uh, P, some P P Es, that's gowns, footies and hats. Uh, which we were struggling to get. And from my understanding is we are, have successfully resolved that. So, uh, we have constantly been working and, uh, on getting this done, but we still had to wait for clarification. So thank you for the question. Paul, you want to add something?
Yeah, just one thing, just Gary, um, just clarify, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, but I'd just like to have anything that you know or can add to that. Is that my understanding is we don't necessarily have to hire the contract tracers. We want to make sure they're there and they're trained, but they can be volunteers, they can be members of the National Guard, they can be. E M S, people that work for a fire district. Um, we don't necessarily have to hire them. Correct?
I believe that is correct, but, but we are responsible for them. So we have to make sure that they are trained, they have the resources they need. But I don't believe we have to, you know, hire them if we have other resources to support it. I'd have to, I will confirm that though.
My understanding is we need a certain level, which is about thirty. We have some on staff who are trained, the others just have to be on contract. And so should it, should a spike occur, we, we have access to them.
And we may even have, yeah, we may even have employees currently that maybe, um, could be retrained for this. And so there wouldn't be necessarily a hiring, but they'd be a resource to, 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 um, be the contract tracers, as I understand it.
Yeah, I think we have eight, nine, or two, eleven of them already available. Ken?
Uh, yeah, I think Chair, you, you spoke to that. We have people who are, are contact tracers, uh, on staff on a regular basis. That work on disease contacts for H I V, syphilis, and other diseases. So th- there's a small core of people that are expert and trained. And all we have to do is expand that to a sufficient number to, to be qualified as a region.
All right. It looks like we're ready. Any other?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. No. All right. Well, thank you very much for your, uh, call, uh, questions and for your emails. And we'll move on to our county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, so one piece of good news I'd like to share, which is something you addressed earlier in this meeting today, Chair Bernard. And that's about food support for those who are in need of food during this crisis. So there's been an effort by our, um, Health Housing and Human Services Department, our Sheriff's Office, and our Emergency Operations Center. Along with numerous volunteers, including I believe all of you commissioners, who are working to address urgent food insecurity in Clackamas County. This partnership has led to food box deliveries to residences and public food box distribution points. Using supplies from the Oregon Food Bank and donations from private partners. We have provided forty-five thousand pounds of food. To an estimated one thousand four hundred and fifty households within Clackamas County in April. Uh, Dave's Killer Bread alone provided Clackamas County with one thousand one hundred loaves of bread. So thank you to Dave's Killer Bread and the Oregon Food Bank and all those who have donated these food, this food for our community. Um, a key to this effort were the county staff and commissioners and other volunteers who made this possible. We had an average of twenty-two people per day during the month of April. Who put in seven hundred and twenty-four volunteer hours to, uh, pack up and deliver this food. And I know all of you have done that as well, Commissioner. So thank you so much for our community members who have, have come forward to help our community during this time. That's my update, Chair.
I, uh, want to mention Teresa Christopherson, uh, you know, uh, I think she works in D T D, correct? Yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry, H three S. She works in H three S.
Oh, does she? H three S. It's kind of interesting because, um, she also runs a bus. Uh, you know, manages the Mountain Express. And now she's, uh, coordinating food box delivery, uh, on, uh, Mondays. And I think three or four days a week. So I want to thank her for her efforts. All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Communications and Martha, you're up.
Uh, turn your mic. Okay, there you go. No barking dogs right yet, so that's a good sign. So basically, Paul, Ken and I, we were, we were on a conference call with the North Clackamas Chamber on Monday. And then we switched to a conversation with Senator Wyden, which, uh, who gave us an update on. What could possibly be another, uh, package of fiscal help for local governments? I do hear that it's, it's hitting some bumps, but I'm hopeful that, um. The federal government will realize that we're the ground workers that are really needing resources to make things happen directly to our citizens. And that moves forward. Um, I also had a meeting with our Willamette Falls Locks Commission Executive Team. And as many of you know, our bill, uh, did not make it through the legislature through no fault of ours. Uh, it got caught up in the, um, political, political dynamics that happened down there. Um, so at this point in time, we would like to at least. Maintain the bill, work with Representative Meek and our other supporters. And we certainly will not be, it doesn't appear like we will be addressing this in any emergency special session that's coming up. But we would like to keep the, uh, idea alive to, uh, go back again, uh, during a, a full session. To once again see if we can get a public corporation entity to do the transfer. It's going to take more work with the core, unfortunately. I mean, they're, they've been diverted to other things right now. Um, but I, I can say that I think the full executive team would like to keep, uh, the idea alive. Particularly if there is, um, an infrastructure package. That finally comes down from the federal government, we'd like to at least be ready to see if we can qualify, uh, for that particular project. So that was, um, that was a tough.
Nope.
Sorry.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Well, no, what happens is this is my iPad, my home iPad. Uh, because I have a better background, I can't do that on my county iPad. So. You get to see the mountain when I'm on my, and then I get these phone calls. So what can I say? Sorry, guys. Anyway, stay safe and healthy. I'm really, I'm really glad that I'm working with such a great group of people. Sonia and Ken and, um, you know, Jim and, and Paul and, uh. And all you guys. And I really hope, fingers crossed, that we are all back together as a team. And that we know all about this, fingers crossed, on, uh, Tuesday night, that we hope that will happen. So. Anyway, it's great working with all of you, especially during a crisis. It's been, I think this is going to be one of our, uh, defining life experiences as commissioners. So. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you. So lots of great discussion today about how we're balancing reopen with public health and safety. And it's, uh, very clear if we look around the world, we look around the country. That we can say that so far Oregon has been taking incremental steps. That has kept us at a prime place to do this correctly. But as we all know, this virus can spread so quickly, so rapidly and overwhelm systems. Within just, you know, a couple of weeks, it can just be stating. So it's really scary. I can speak for all of us out there. It's, there's a lot of nerves, a lot of anxiety. And yet we reopen our economy. We're going to be living with this potentially for months and months and months. There's a, a treatment or a vaccine. So we all have to be part of the solution. And when it comes, it always, we have to focus back into, who am I individually? What can I do? What do I need to do to protect myself and my family? And as we all know, uh, masks have been in short supply. So when it became pretty clear, start the process of reopening. Know if masks were going to be a requirement or not. And right now they're strongly suggested, but in the governor's guidance, they aren't absolutely required. But I read today at the Portland Airport, they will be required. So as many of you know, I have, um, three children, they're all grown up. My oldest Christine is thirty-five years old. She lives in an adult foster home. I have not seen her since the beginning of March because I was self-isolating at the very beginning of this before. We were self-isolating, um, because of her. And she has significant developmental disabilities. She's considered a vulnerable population. Nobody can go out of home unless it's staff and it's absolutely required. And she would not, um, masks were required, she would not wear them because it would be irritating to her face and take it off. And she wouldn't like that. We serve for a very thin covering. But Christine is able to go out in public. I think she did this because she's not going to want to pull it off this way, her head and. So it will be daughter's mask. She's required to wear a mask. I can tell you.
Honey, you're really cutting out.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying that would be my daughter's mask if she's required to wear one. Because she wouldn't rip it off of her face because it would be covering all of her. Because I can tell you that individually and personally, having these family relationships is really critical. And it's really tough when we can't see our children or grandchildren. So. We all be ready individually and we all have to take our own personal responsibility for ourselves and for our family to help get us through this most challenging part. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Paul?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, just a couple, um, things I want to, uh, with, uh, my staff's help, Emily, she was able to, um, uh. Just run some numbers on the thirty-six counties. And, um, on, uh, the number of cases, I think it's pretty clear on the O H A website. You can find out that Clackamas County ranks, has a fourth highest number of cases in the state. Um, and, um, uh, the people that, the counties that have our number one, two, and three is, um. What is, uh, Multnomah County, followed by Marion County, then Washington County, and then Clackamas. But on a per capita basis, right, so I think it's important, just don't understand the population, we actually ranked tenth, uh, the tenth highest. And again, um, uh, Multnomah County, um, is the, is the top one. Or excuse me, Marion County is actually the top one per capita, followed by Multnomah County. So, um, I think those are statistics that will be, um, that'll be valuable. And on the health region, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're in, in the middle of the pack. And we'll see if, if this region can't meet those, uh, three, those three regional prerequisite criteria for our region. And that'll be one gate or one gateway into, um, having our application accepted. Due to the volume of emails, um, I, I, uh, my staff, Emily and I, uh, crafted a response, um, to a number of people. And I thought, uh, and because the flow of emails is coming in about reopening, I thought I would read basically, write my reply. To, um, to everyone. And so, um, here it goes. If, indulge me, it's not that long, but I, I do want to read it verbatim. So I don't like to read from things during the meeting, but here it goes. At this time, the state of Oregon is reviewing applications for most of the counties in the state. As of this writing, three counties have not submitted an application. Those counties are Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington. We realize that the COVID nineteen is causing both a public health crisis and an economic crisis, and we must factor both in our decision-making. Tuesday, May twelfth, I inquired as to the status of Clackamas County's reopening application. The Board of Commissioners were told that the draft application would be discussed next Tuesday, May nineteenth, and perhaps would be submitted on Friday, May twenty-second. Last Friday, May eighth, during a virtual meeting with the governor and her staff. County commissioners from Clackamas, Clatsop, Columbia, Multnomah, Tillamook, and Washington Counties heard. That the counties could submit an application before they actually met all the prerequisites. Provided that there was a strategy or a plan on how the county would meet any unmet prerequisites. While it appears Clackamas County has not yet met all the criteria, it is my belief we should, we should have an application submitted as soon as possible. With a date listed that we anticipate the county would be ready to safely open under the phase one plan set forth by the governor. The reason to do this quickly is it allows businesses, business owners and their employees time to prepare for reopening. We realize that there is a need to convey some reasonable level of certainty of how and when we enter a phase one reopening. There are businesses that will need to make an investment in order to open, to reopen. And if we were to open prematurely and our county experienced a resurgence in the COVID nineteen hospital admissions. The state of Oregon would force us to close down again. That would be devastating and put businesses, employees, and the public in a more precarious position than we are today. We are all in this together. We know that responsible members of our community are encouraging others to abide by guidelines such as social distancing. Wearing a mask, hand washing, and other measures that keep us all as safe as possible. There are responsible businesses that are taking every precaution to protect the public, their employees, and provide the goods and services that we all need. We are thankful for all the frontline workers such as emergency responders, medical personnel, doctors and nurses, the food workers and clerks in our stores. And all those providing essential goods and services. These are unprecedented times that require thoughtful and responsible approaches to getting us out of the crisis we find ourselves in. I'm confident that by all of us working together, we can get through this. Thank you. And those are my comments for today.
Okay, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As for the last few weeks, clearly and obviously, and for good reason. We, uh, our, our, our work has been dominated by our response to COVID nineteen, uh, as it should be. But other things have been happening and will continue to happen in Clackamas County. So I thought today I would just focus on a few of those things, uh, even those that have been affected by the COVID nineteen. You probably know that the governor closed all, closed the state fair and all large gatherings. And our fair board here in Clackamas County has said that the fair for this year will be canceled. However, they are working on, on other alternative, uh, opportunities, uh, at the fairgrounds. Uh, for people to be able to go to while still maintaining social distancing and other protocols. One good example of that is they're working on the idea of, of a, uh, a drive-in movie theater. Uh, that they can take up and put down and et cetera. So there's a number of things that they're being very creative about and working on. Uh, to, to, um, take the edge off of some of what we've been experiencing. While obviously tourism is in a, uh, in a really bad slump because of travel restrictions and everything else. Our tourism board still meets, is still maintaining relationships with the various businesses that are directly affected by tourism. And they're making sure that they will be prepared so that when tourism does begin to ramp back up. The partnerships remain in place and business, uh, that's dependent upon tourism will be able to ramp back up quickly. Uh, and help get that portion of our economy moving again. Our C B X or, um, high-speed internet. Um, programs, uh, here in Clackamas County are still moving forward. Our hotspots have been placed in a variety of places that, that you can locate by going onto our clackamas.us. Uh, and, and, uh, even if you live in an isolated area, there, there's a nearby opportunity for you to get high-speed internet. Our partnership with, with, um, Sandy Net, uh, that is providing high-speed internet to what's known as the Kiwanis Project. Has new subscribers, uh, to give you an example of the improvement in service. They've gone from six megabytes per second to one hundred megabytes per second. Uh, making them very happy with that increased, uh, um, service level, uh, in, in high-speed internet. The Department of Transportation and Development is extremely busy. They have created, uh, a, an application process for construction. Uh, and construction is booming out there right now, uh, and they're able to move, uh, the application process forward almost entirely electronically online. And, and obviously keeping that portion of our, of our county staff very, very busy. And finally, uh, to, uh, one of our rural communities known as Bull Run, uh, the county has applied for a build grant. Uh, once again, to the federal government to hopefully replace that build, that Bull Run Bridge as soon as possible. So just want to make the point, there's a lot of other things happening even as we deal with this COVID nineteen, uh, crisis. And that, uh, I really want to compliment our staff and Gary's leadership in, in keeping our staff focused. And one final shout out to the union leadership team in Clackamas County. Who have rallied their members to support our efforts to get to, to continue to serve the public effectively. Uh, while we deal with this crisis. I really want to thank that uni- union leadership team. And, uh, acknowledge that this is what happens when you have good working relationships. I really want to thank that uni- union leadership team and, uh, acknowledge that this is what happens when you have good working relationships with the representative bargaining units, uh, in, in your organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I have a rather interesting thing to talk about. Um, you know, many of you may have seen commercials or mailers against myself. Uh, you know, and I seriously considered hiring a lawyer, uh, suing for, uh, damaging the, uh, the fact that my wife, uh, worked here, did an excellent job damaging her career. You know, so I got a response back to the lawyer that, from the lawyer that I thought was interesting. Um, so I checked with the lawyer and he said, "The law gives candidates a lot of leeway about what is a lie in a campaign." Uh, and you know, I've seen the commercial. Uh, hopefully somebody's not calling me to say stop. I've seen the commercial and I just want to say that, um, the only true part of those commercials on that mailer is that I have a beautiful wife. And, uh, I want to thank my wife for standing behind me, uh, in this challenging time when her reputation is under attack. And, um, and I also want to thank Don Crapp for his, uh, message. Uh, he placed on, uh, Facebook that cleared up the facts. The dates of hiring our first date, when I became a commissioner. It's quite clear that there are lots of lies. And, uh, so I, you know, I'm going to dedicate my future. I have dedicated my political career to not being, uh, someone who attacks other people. Uh, I actually, behind me, and I, I probably can't show it. This is one that, let me see, how do you do that? I got, Paul got one of these too, remember that? The whack-a-mole? Uh, pretty crazy stuff. I actually laughed when I got this in the mail, but it's not so funny when your wife's being attacked. So, um, I hope that, you know, future politicians, uh, folks, uh, in the public arena, this, this is not a joke. This job is not a joke. Every one of these commissioners works hard daily, risk their reputation to protect you. So I want to thank you all, all you commissioners and you Gary and staff here for the hard work you do and the dedication and the risks you put forward to make this the great county it is. So with that, thank you Danielle and thank you. We are adjourned.